Next, we will take up item number seventeen, the Police Federation Contract. Is there any discussion? Don't all jump in at one time. All right, well, I will start off by saying this is one of a, the biggest votes we may take this term. Is anybody else in queue? This is not refreshing for me. Wonsley, all right. I'm going to start with Councilmember Wonsley.
You could also feel free to continue, Council President Payne.
Go ahead.
All right, then. So first, I would like to begin my comments by thanking all the residents who participated in the numerous engagement opportunities we curated, either in AEO or outside of AEO, around the police contract. I know before taking up this item and even before I was in office, I remember after the murder of George Floyd, city leaders, including both electeds and our current mayor, pointing to this contract as being one of the main reasons for the lack of police accountability. In fact, they said that this contract was why they were unable to keep bad officers off the force and why cops like Derek Chauvin were allowed to brutalize so many people for so long and without any accountability. I know that I never forgot those comments, and I know many residents have not forgotten them either. This was demonstrated for me as I received hundreds of emails from my office asking why the city all of a sudden did a beta switch, be in switch on how this contract could actually be a tool of reform. To get to the point, though, in thinking of that, I won't be supporting this item. The administration asked council last term to basically share what specific changes they would like to see happen in this contract. And was very concerned to see that many of the changes that were brought forward in this contract that I supported, and I know a number of my other colleagues did as well, they're all temporary changes. And to me, I don't see temporary gains for permanent raises as progress. I also have been in disagreement with some of the comments that I've heard from the administration about this contract not being a place for reform, as if other channels are actually working. For example, in response to MPD having some questionable practices pertaining to the promotion and hiring of police officers, authored a legislative directive to see what changes or accountability mechanisms were put in place by the administration to ensure that the city was not continuing the pattern of hiring and promoting problematic officers. Despite constantly hearing that changes were being made, especially seeing that in the media and in press conferences, it has now been over a year, and I have not received official report back on exactly what reforms have been put in place to ensure that we are recruiting and promoting high-quality candidates that are following ethical and equitable and constitutional standards. This council and the public deserves to have transparent updates on those changes, as well as an analysis of outcomes for those changes, and right now, that's not happening. I also want to highlight that coaching is another area that this contract could have addressed. The lack of proper usage from the city has been weaponized during the grievance process. And the contract presented the administration the opportunity to clearly define coaching and to codify it as a form of discipline as to avoid any further misuse of it. For those arguing that the contract is not the place for it, I would also argue that considering the unique situation Minneapolis is in and our documented history of city officials ignoring the misuse and abuse of coaching for decades, it absolutely should have been in here, and I know a lot of residents agree with that. We have also been told that the main and primary reason to approve this contract is that it's going to ultimately help with recruitment and improve our staffing. And when you start to look around at other cities that might be paying slightly lesser than what we're proposing in Minneapolis, like in St. Paul and other surrounding suburbs who are not facing staffing challenges such as the ones that we're experiencing, it does expose that staffing issues is not all about money. It also boils down to whether or not they have a department that is deeply committed to reform and change and changing the culture within it to reflect that. If this contract passes, I don't necessarily believe that it's going to dramatically change our staffing numbers. In fact, I think we should expect to see a significant number of our officers retire once this contract passes. I don't necessarily see it's going to retain or suddenly increase our officer ranks to get back to the glory days of post or pre-2020. And that's largely because pay raises without real and permanent reform does not actually lead to an increased healthy workforce. But though I won't be supporting this contract today, I do look forward to working with my colleagues in the administration to make sure that as we're preparing to go into the next round of negotiations, this time that we actually incorporate real and permanent reforms so that we're not in this predicament again where we're paying high prices for things that's going to expire in eighteen months and that maybe won't even be even received or experienced by our constituents in that period of time. So I just wanted to share on the record where I'm standing on this contract as of now. And with that, I'll pass it to the other number of colleagues in queue.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully respect Councilmember Wonsley's intention to vote no, and so she did not move this item, so I will first move it for approval and ask for a second before I have my comments. Thank you. It's been a long road with this contract, but I think we're finally there. As I said at committee, there have been historic levels of engagement on this, both with the public and the council. We've been in conversation about it for years, and I'm glad we have an opportunity to hear from residents at public hearings. That's important, but the fact is, we've been hearing feedback about this for years, both from residents who have to wait hours for an available officer to arrive at the scene of a crime, and officers who've told us they spend their shifts running from call to call and are being required to complete mandatory overtime. Yet again yesterday, I received a call from a constituent whose mother was assaulted on her front porch. And when officers arrived, they told her that that night, two nights ago, there were five officers working that shift at the Fifth Precinct. As you know, the Fifth Precinct covers twenty neighborhoods and about a quarter of our city. Five officers were responsible for response in that much of our city, and that's not a healthy workforce. This staffing crisis isn't sustainable. We do know, we know that already we have planned retirements happening. We know already that there will probably be more people leaving our city's workforce and MPD than ever before, but we have a responsibility to ensure the safety of every resident in our city and maintain a functional police department. This contract offers a lot of improvements at how that police department functions. This contract really helps to achieve it, and I'll be voting in support of it today. Thank you.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. To me, this is a groundbreaking contract, and it symbolizes a new era. The community engagement was done in a way that we had never seen before, and I'm grateful to my colleagues who guided and pushed for this and for all the residents who added their thoughtful feedback. As it will be stated, I know it had already been said, but it offers significant base pay raises that move MPD compensation rates from the bottom twenty-five percent in the state to the top five in our region, something I have been pushing for all along. It enhances transparency, strengthens managerial oversight, and equips MPD management with essential tools to better deploy limited resources and run the department. I will take these incremental changes as a win for our community, and I'm happy to support this today.
Councilmember Chavez.
Council President Payne, thank you. I want to begin by thanking you for the process that this body underwent regarding this contract. The mayor's administration was trying to force a vote days after we had closed session to learn about the contract, where many of us ended up having many questions, and you pushed back against that in the name of transparency, making sure that our residents had the time to weigh in, testify at council, and send feedback. I also want to thank the residents for their engagement and for pushing for changes in this contract. There are some. This allowed me the opportunity to have conversations, office hours, and receive emails, phone calls, read public comments my residents made. Eighty-two percent of the residents who reached out to my office asked me to reject this contract. And while it does not encompass my entire ward, it helped me come to a decision that I will be voting no on this contract and to expect more for my residents. In November of 2023, I sent an update to my residents expressing my belief that this contract should rein in on off-duty, negotiate the ending of coaching that prevents discipline and accountability, work to gain more management control, the need for provisions that can fire officers with terrible records, and find ways to incentivize those officers that are doing the job well, like Inspector Gomez, who works hard for the Third Precinct, and I have deep appreciation for. And while there are big pay hikes and an increase in some management control, my main concerns are not being addressed in this contract nor in the policy manual today. In fact, this contract has attempted to codify the city's position on coaching. It specifies that discipline refers exclusively to written reprimands, suspensions, demotions, and discharges. Coaching is not named in the discipline component, and there are no guardrails to prevent coaching from even happening. I'll end it with this. I believe in historic pay raises, but I believe that those historic pay increases should come with historic and permanent reforms. I look forward to the next contract negotiations, and I hope the mayor begins to make changes in the policy manual, and I hope he doesn't wait for the consent decree to do so.
I added myself to queue to tell a little bit of a story of how I got here. Before I ran for city council, as I was mentioned at the top of this agenda, I was running my own business, and I was a contractor here at the city consulting with the innovation team. And at that time, we were working on developing the new behavioral crisis response. And that was in response to the killing of Jamar Clark and Justine Ruschek and actions that our predecessors took demanding that we transform public safety. And I was sitting on a teams call with the director of my team, Brian Smith, as he was letting us know that he was going on medical leave because of the racism he was experiencing working at the director level in the city of Minneapolis. He walked away from his position because his physical health could no longer tolerate existing within this institution. We were experiencing so much pushback and even sabotage when it came to trying to work on programs that would help keep our residents safe. And I learned that it was just too big of a barrier to have this administration leading this charge when we talked about public safety. So I stepped up and ran for office. That's why I'm sitting here today, ready to take this vote. And so when I come to this vote, I come to this vote with a vision of public safety. And I have a vision of public safety that, yes, includes police officers, but that cannot be the only way that we keep our community safe. And I am extraordinarily proud of the work that we've been able to achieve. I think our behavioral crisis response is amazing. We couldn't have done it without Brian Smith, Gina Obiri, Taylor Koch Dotson, Chikimura Onuke, an amazing team of people, none of whom are here anymore. The only one that's left from my original team is me because of how much pressure we were under. And it took running for office to make sure that this was a reality. And we are not done transforming this system. We cannot solely rely on police, and we can't just do it with mental health responders. We need new approaches across the spectrum of safety. And as I think about my vote on this contract, I think about what are the barriers in my way of delivering on that future? And one of those barriers are arbitrary ratios that keep our staffing at a rate that doesn't match with the need. We might need more investigators than we need patrol officers. We might need more mental health professionals than we have now. We might need more substance abuse advisors than we have now, which is zero, and a number of different types of approaches to safety, both in the prevention, response, and restoration buckets that we've learned so much about through our work in the Safe and Thriving Communities Report. This contract does not go nearly far enough. It really doesn't. But what we learned through this process is that transformation's not going to happen solely in the text of the document. It's going to happen from continuous pressure, not just from us here on this dais, but from you out here, not just in this room, but across the city. We had a history of a toxic racist police department because we had a broad community that was willing to look the other way. We need a majority of voters in this city to start paying attention. We need a majority of voters in the city to start having a more sophisticated conversation and not just to boil it down to pro or anti-police. This is not about that. This is about people living in a city where you can thrive, that is just, and where we have joy. We have had, we've been stolen, joy's been stolen from us, for a lot of us, especially those of us who carry marginalized identity. And this contract is not about that exactly, but it's one of the steps along the way to get to that vision. And we cannot allow this one vote to be the end-all, be-all, and we have to keep the pressure on, and my commitment is to do that. And so I will be supporting the contract today, but that means we have so much more work to do in the future. And with that, I will call on Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I couldn't agree with you more that we need many, many aspects of public safety. In fact, last night, there was a young man in crisis on First Avenue Northeast between Main Street and Second Street, and the police were unable to get a canopy worker there, and we should talk about that later. But that would have been the perfect opportunity to help that young man rather than just get put in handcuffs and let away in an ambulance. But this labor agreement has been negotiated in good faith by the city staff and agreed to by the Police Federation. It gives the chief unprecedented authority to reform and to promote and to schedule, and that's very important. Chief O'Hara, I appreciate your steadfastness in stating that it's on your shoulders to reform this department. You've accepted that challenge. You do it every day when you wake up. Thank you very much. This raise is needed because we have to compete with other area police agencies. If you're a young woman starting your career in policing, should you go to Blaine and make ninety-one thousand dollars a year, or should you go to Minneapolis and make seventy-one thousand? When you're twenty-two years old, that's a big factor in your decision-making. You know, we all make much more than that, and we do not face the danger every day that we might be killed doing our job. And I say that because of Officer Mitchell, who leaves behind four children because he was killed in the line of duty trying to help someone who was injured. During this contract process, we had the most open and transparent negotiations in history. At the two public hearings, and it was a great idea to hold those public hearings, but eighty percent of the speakers told us, "Vote yes for this contract." We have to think as we prepare to vote that we are not activists anymore. We are elected officials who took an oath to serve our citizens. It is a time to use common sense to serve those citizens and to send a strong message to correct the current police officers and those considering working for MPD that elected officials support them and the far-too-many victims of crime that we have in the city. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, President Payne. I want to begin my comments by thanking all the community members in Ward Twelve and across our city who reached out to my office directly over email, phone, at office hours, and the community members who showed up to the two public hearings that took place in the AEO Committee. Your engagement in this process and deep care for our community is greatly appreciated and inspiring. I want to express my gratitude for the process that this council and the leadership of our council led in having multiple opportunities for not only the public to learn more deeply about the details and impacts of this contract, but also to engage in a dialogue with us and each other. This type of engagement on the police contract has not happened before, and I think it should be common practice moving forward. I particularly thank the committee's chair, Chair Wonsley, for her persistence in making this possible in her committee. So I struggled a lot when it came to this vote. I spent countless hours weighing the pros, cons, the community voices, and the hard realities of our city and the state of public safety and policing. Even on the most contentious votes that I have experienced on this council so far in my first term, the pressure may have been really on, but I felt a lot of clarity in the decisions I made. I didn't feel that way about this contract. This is hard. This is not a clear-cut choice, and I think that's worth being said. And I hope I can adequately explain why this is my experience. First, the reality of the state of public safety and policing as a whole is that we have a police department who very recently had major accountability issues, issues with brutal policing, issues at large with racism, sexism, ableism, and unconstitutionality in the recent present and for decades past. And that's the reason why we're under a consent decree and an impending consent decree from the Department of Justice. Feelings of our system of policing have cost people their lives. I think back to last term, before I was a council member but was an aide on a resolution that I helped work on in honoring the victims of police brutality on the third year, remembering the murder of George Floyd. And we quoted, "If we are to honor and acknowledge the hardship of victims of police brutality and create systemic change, we must boldly and clearly name the problem." Also, the hard reality that we see before us is officers who I have seen up close, our Third Precinct Inspector, Inspector Gomez, other folks I've seen up close trying their best to professionally and compassionately do their jobs. Folks that I have called on often as a council member to be responsive to varying safety situations where constituents were genuinely scared or worried, and through that type of compassionate work were addressed. The reality that that work is really dangerous and in very tough conditions. Another reality is that comprehensive public safety with alternatives to police are still stretched thin. It's undersupervised in its current iteration by this administration, and not enough is in place to address the root causes of safety that lead to law violations. Another hard reality is that overtime among officers is high, and officers are in positions where they burn out, their well-being is in jeopardy, and that puts safety for everyone in jeopardy. Another is the charter minimum requirement that is unreachable, and the reason why I was a vocal supporter of question two, because every year, we're budgeting for positions we can't fill. Police reform for a system found broken by many for decades and reported broken by a dual consent decree lags behind. And the reality is, the residents expressing deep frustration that since 2020 that there hasn't, there has yet to be significant reform, are right to be frustrated, and their distrust is valid, and we have to accept that in our community and in our political climate. We can't invalidate that. That's a real and true frustration shared by many in our community. And the other hard reality that made this decision so tough for me is that there isn't solid consensus in our community around this contract. That staffing is a priority but feels in contest with reform and change. Even our mayor has decided to exaggerate this contest by proposing cuts to defunding neighborhood safety programming to fund this contract in a time where cultural ambassadors would have been a part of violence prevention efforts on corridors that in just recent days have experienced violent incidents. Transit safety programming could help further the goal of addressing root causes of law violating behavior and more. All these realities paired with being a new council member who did not have the opportunity to weigh in on this contract during its negotiation have made this vote, for me, again entirely very difficult. I'll be honest, there are provisions that I really find to be good within this contract. The seventy-thirty staffing reform was long advocated by community members and many council members before us that allows staffing flexibility that is necessary to meet safety needs and address officer burnout and can help determine the true amount of officers needed to address safety concerns. Civilization of investigators that help much-needed addressing of clearance rates and disarm positions that don't require guns, and again, build a pathway to comprehensive safety. I'm starting to run out of time, and so I'm going to give my time back, and I will close again. I know that I'm spending a lot of time talking on this topic, but it feels really important to me to really make clear to my constituents and the residents in Minneapolis how I'm coming to my decision. So I'll pause for now and pass back to the chair.
Councilmember Utah.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I'm excited to vote for this today. This morning, when I woke up and thought, okay, today's the day that we're going to vote for this, it made me think way back to nineteen ninety-four when I got my first job. I remember walking down Central Avenue in Fridley, filling out applications at every fast-food restaurant. My first job was White Castle because it paid more. It paid more than Hardee's. It paid more than McDonald's. It paid more than Wendy's. And so here you have it, the first job, White Castle. And so I felt good about knowing that someone is going to choose us as their first professional job because we have a competitive pay. This has been a lot of work, and there are a lot of people who never get recognized for this work. And so I just want to take an opportunity to thank Rashida Deloney, Greg Wiley, Sarah Ryskin. Sarah Ryskin is attorney out of the city attorney's office, who have taught me so much in this process and the previous process on a police contract. You know, they've done a lot of work. They've had, I've spent some time with Rashida Deloney and just, you know, really got energy from her because she's never given up. She felt so confident in doing the right thing, so that made me feel confident in the right thing. So thank you all so much. To all the people who work behind the scenes to make this happen, you know, we're fortunate that we get to come out here and sit on the dais and discuss how we feel about this, but there's a lot of people who work hard to make sure that this happens. So I want you all to know that I appreciate all the work, the years of work that you've done to make this possible for not only us as a council, but for our city. So thank you all so very much. To all the people who came out to the public hearings, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins, for insisting in those meetings that we have those community listening sessions for this beforehand. And thank you, Councilmember Wonsley, for providing an opportunity for not only War Four residents, but anyone who was interested in having a voice in this to come and speak. That was really good to hear, you know, just people showing up. And there was two public hearings, and there's a lot of people, you know. One went till nine o'clock PM. And, you know, you don't appreciate it when you're up here and you're hot, but you appreciate it when you're at home in the air conditioning and you're watching the council meeting, right? And you can hear back what people say. So I do, I appreciate everyone who showed up. Thank you to War Four residents who reached out to me via email, phone calls, walked up to me in the grocery store, came to my house and talked to my camera. That happened, more than you think. Walked up to me while I was outside and talked to me about this and let me know how they feel about it. Like Councilmember Chavez, majority of my residents support this, and so I support this. Thank you to my mother, who called me early this morning and gave me a speech and said, "As your favorite constituent," because she is that, "I expect nothing but good from you and your colleagues today." So colleagues, my mama said, "Do it." But thank you all. Thank you to my colleagues, too. I hear you. I hear you saying this is our hard vote, and I get that. And so I really am looking forward to what happens today and how we move forward. I'm optimistic about the future of reforms and all the work that we all are going to do, not just council, not just the mayor's administration. And thank you to the mayor, too, because the mayor has definitely provided an opportunity for me to learn, not only in this, but the previous contract, and his administration has been more than willing to work with me and my staff on our needs for this. So thank you all so much for this. I'm looking forward to the future of working together on policing and police reforms and also supporting our officers. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be voting no today, and like my colleague said, it was a decision that I came to with And like my colleague said, it was a decision that I came to with a lot of difficulty and a lot of consideration. I am always making Councilmember Vitale's mom mad, so I apologize for that. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, I wasn't going to speak today, but my colleague did say, you know, you're the old guy on the council. You should probably say a few things about your thoughts. And it's interesting, you know, the one thing that strikes me is that we can have a lot of similar feelings about how this process was, process that I was really grateful for, and come to different conclusions. I'm glad that Councilmember Vitale took time to thank our staff. In my time in office, you know, our staff did do a tremendous job in engaging in this process and getting us to this point. I wanted to just say one thing, though. Yesterday, I got a chance to see one of the elders in the community that a lot of us know, Makmud Elkati. He was at an event in my ward yesterday. And just in a brief encounter with him, it reminded me of a long time ago where I was in a discussion about a different topic. I was a teenager at the time. And I was pointing out to him something I thought was a contradiction in what he was saying. And he said, "You know, two things can be true, Jeremiah. Two things can be true." And I feel like that's true here, right? Two things can be true. On one hand, staff did do a tremendous job in negotiating these terms. And I'd say that, I was talking to a former council member recently, and they agreed that this is probably one of the better conditions that the contract has been in, in front of a council in decades. And unfortunately, no fault to our staff, I think that the bar that we set out to clear was incredibly low. We heard from a former MPD officer during testimony, who was in favor of the contract, say that one of the mistakes the cities made historically was to give over managerial authority in, you know, to escape having to do pay increases. And so we gave over our ability to manage the department until all of a sudden we find that the contract's essentially managing the department. I think that's the situation that we've been in. And so I do think that staff in negotiating the LOAs and the MOAs did a tremendous job, and that was probably the only pathway forward. And I don't want to discount that or undermine that in any way. But also, I've been on this council long enough to feel that this kind of incrementalism, given what our city's been through with the police department, not just with the murder of George Floyd, but with a slew of other issues that we faced even before that occurred, just in my first two years in office. You know, this kind of incrementalism is just not what we can accept. We need bigger swings than this. I truly believe that, and that's why I won't be supporting it. One of the things that I'll also say that, you know, maybe isn't the reason I'm not supporting the contract, but it's certainly been true in my time in office, has been that the contract has been this space, this political battleground, quite frankly, that says that, you know, whatever it is that you need as a community, we can do it in the contract. So a couple of years ago, it was, hey, look, reforms, the blocks or reforms of the contract, right? And when we sort of reached a point where people started demanding that, it was all of a sudden, actually, this isn't the appropriate pathway. There's other ways that we can do this. There's other ways that we have done this. Right now, I'm hearing this correlation between the terms of this contract and staffing, the terms of this contract and morale, the terms of this contract and the reputation of the department. And if this contract passes and if and when staffing is not resolved by the contract, I'm sort of curious to know what will be sort of the next frontier. What will be the next sort of Schrodinger's contract that we will debate, you know, that it will solve, that it ultimately does not solve, right? I think that if this contract passes today, all of the staffing issues, our burden to recruit better, our burden to improve the reputation of this department, they aren't moved an inch by this contract. And maybe that's true no matter the terms of the contract, but I think that we should know it as a community because if we want to resolve those things, we have to be committed to resolving those things. And we can't just say, "The contract will fix it," and then when the contract doesn't, say, "Oh, we never said that." So, and so, you know, with that, I'll conclude my statements. I want to thank my colleagues. And again, to anyone, to any of my colleagues that are supporting this contract, I understand. As somebody who's been around and has seen the condition of some of the contracts that have been before council, you know, you're voting for one of the best contracts that has been before us. I just, I wholeheartedly believe, maybe out of naivete, that we can do better, that we can swing bigger. So that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. Schrodinger's contract, someone should clip that one. You win. You win on that one, Councilmember Ellison. Going back to where I left off, the provisions, the reforms that I think are good within this contract. Again, the civilian investigators, I think it, like I said before, builds a pathway for comprehensive safety alongside BCR, violence interrupters, that can help support limiting interactions with police and also help officers be responsive to emergency situations only they can handle. The zipper clause, it's pretty technical, but it is a big win, and it's been a long-time fight. It's ending a long-time practice of the police union utilizing letters of agreement that have existed in perpetuity for decades that lead to taking away management authority, less transparency, and is a barrier to progress. And retracting civilian names if a record of an officer is requested. I think that's a good step. And again, I think with the 70-30 reform and the civilian investigators, I think this helps us kind of build a pathway to examine the charter minimum of officers and consider what is actually required as a number for police officers to keep the work that they need to do going in reality. So these reforms are good, yet minimal. I do think what is frankly bad about this contract that others have named is high and historic wages for police officers to the tune of $1.5 million. That is unbalanced. It's the unbalanced nature, even if it makes Minneapolis competitive. For me, it is personally frustrating to see little reform accomplished, even if this is the best contract that we've seen before us in recent days, and I think we should call that out. It's also really frustrating and dizzying to our community that the city for so long has communicated that reform should live in the police union contract, and now the message has done a full 180 to say less is more. That's not an okay thing to do to our residents, and we owe our residents more. That's something that I think is before this body and the city of Minneapolis to figure out because that is a big deal to switch our messaging in that way. Many people have long sought reform within this police contract because that is what we told them. This contract also signals that the city has decided in this moment to prioritize staffing over reform. And that should alarm us and hold us all accountable to taking much more to fix the system. And was stated over and over again, and what we should do is hold management, the mayor and chief accountable. And I want us to figure out what that looks like as a city council and how we do that, a real plan, one that people can see and hold us accountable to. Because we say, "Hold the mayor and chief accountable." We say, "Hold management accountable" because we're giving the management authority. But we need to figure out what's the pathway to do it because without enforcement of that type of standard, it might as well not exist. And that's why me and Councilmember Jason Chavez wrote a letter to the mayor detailing that we must act now to address coaching and that it has been and that it has the potential to be used in a way to hide and make private violations that should be public in the police conduct and policy manual, if that's where it's going to live. And we hope that he will meet with us in good faith in addressing this pressing concern so we can take a step towards laying out how we hold management accountable. Now, the reality of this vote. A yes vote means moving this contract forward. And what's tough for me is learning that there's no way at this point to amend it, to make new provisions. A no vote means sending this back to mediation where likely there will be an impasse reached, and it is highly likely that it will go to binding interest arbitration where arbitrator outside of the city will make decisions that will likely lead to the same contract at the same cost with a huge risk of losing reform that was one within this contract. And our residents deserve to know that, for me, it doesn't feel like there's any sugar coating this contract or choice. I don't want to look at it with rose-tinted glasses. The choice is, again, an unbalanced, high-cost contract with minimal reform or a contract that is the same.
You are at time.
Thank you, Councilmember Payne.
Councilmember Cashman.
Is it possible for me to yield a minute of my time so that Councilmember Chowdhury can finish her remarks?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. So this is a rock and a hard place, and in my view, this contract doesn't meet the mark of reform with the high costs. And otherwise, we're looking at a potentially worse contract. And so for that reason, in order to protect the reforms won and the commitment that I feel very accountable to that I made to my constituents in addressing police staffing concerns, I've decided to vote yes. And it was very tough to make that decision. I feel like at this point, this is the best option, even though this contract doesn't go far enough. I make this choice, understanding the hard realities before us and the tensions that they have with one another. And I make this choice to mitigate further downsides. Actions for reforms and true comprehensive safety must come first after this vote, and I won't be supporting any cuts to neighborhood safety to fund paying for this contract. We have options with the convention center remodel and downtown assets to pay for it. Not our, and I'll just say to the community, I encourage you to stay in dialogue with us, and I encourage you to hold all of us accountable, including me.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. My community in Ward Seven already knows that I'm supporting this contract today. They know where I stand on this contract because I held multiple community meetings on this topic. I door-knocked to talk to folks about this contract, specifically on Franklin Avenue, which is one of our more dangerous areas. I spoke over the phone and over email with hundreds of Ward Seven residents about this contract. I heard their feedback also in the AEO committee hearings that we held. And I know that my community largely wants me to vote yes today. And as a representative of my community, I am prepared to listen to them and to vote yes. I made a commitment to fully fund public safety initiatives in our city, and my actions today will prove that. Today, I'll be voting not only to fund the police contract but also to maintain funding for sweeping comprehensive public safety initiatives. This contract achieves some important reforms with regard to staffing flexibility and civilian investigators. That is meaningful, but does the contract go far enough to address the discipline matrix in coaching? No. But I believe that we cannot make the perfect the enemy of the good. We are in a place now where we have multiple methods to continue pushing for police reform through our budgets, through the Community Commission on Police Oversight, through the implementation of the settlement agreement with the Department of Human Rights and all the partners that we have to help us with that. And the work is on us to continue, so I ask my community to continue to hold me accountable to that reform moving forward.
Vice President Chuck Tai. Thank you, Mr. President. I, you know, agree with the sentiment from several colleagues here today that this vote and this contract is, it represents a historic and consequential choice that this body will make over the course of this term. And, you know, I'm a member of the Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee and have named in committee deliberations that, you know, I'm struggling in making a decision. And as I have gotten there in the work leading up to today, some of the things I have weighed are the good in this process and in this contract, right? For example, one, that we have done more engagement on this contract than any other in the past, and that is something to celebrate and hold ourselves accountable to also moving forward. We shouldn't just do that type of work with our residents when we have this one time, but, you know, have a commitment to doing that moving forward. I do think that this is a better contract than what we've seen in decades. And we've heard that from several of the people who either have been a part of this body in the past or, you know, were involved in this work at the city in decades past. So I think that's a big deal. I also, you know, want to weigh the amount of work that our staff did within the city attorney's office and in our labor relations department to get to this place and the work that they've done with us to help us really, truly, and deeply understand all of the different provisions that are in this contract and how they fit into a bigger picture. I think as a person that voted no last time, I did really want to get to a yes today. And I've heard compelling arguments and really understand and respect the different choices that people are landing in, that colleagues are landing on today. But honestly, what got me to a no was that I actually do buy the argument that management should want to retain authority in labor contracts, right? I believe that we needed to claw back and need to continue to claw back management authority as it relates to this contract. But I also think that having authority is different from using authority. And, like, you know, that's what we've heard from residents, too, especially those who have experience in contract negotiations or in labor work, either from the employer side or from the employee side. Having, if we are clawing back authority, then what is the mechanism for residents and for this body to hold management, and in this case, management means the mayor and the chief accountable, to using it? And to me, in the last few weeks, an example that has continued to stand out is not seeing management authority used in a way that inspires confidence from me to also then rubber-stamp historic raises and temporary movement in this contract. And specifically, what I mean by that is a refusal to engage in discussions around coaching reform. And secondly, a refusal to effectuate minor raises for some of our city's lowest-paid frontline workers who have received the least this year, raises that are funded in our existing budget. And to me, it just doesn't sit right to tell them to wait while we find money in the $15 million ballpark to figure out how to pay for this contract in the next, through the life of this contract. So that's what got me to a no today, and I'm really excited to continue the work on making some of the changes here permanent, on enacting further reforms and accountability within our police department in the ways that we can influence that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. You know, I have sat here and listened to almost all of my colleagues opine on this contract, and I agree with almost all that has been said, including the folks who have said no, that they are not going to support this contract. This will be the third contract that I voted on in my time in office, police contract. And I was able, on this particular contract, prior to and I was able, on this particular contract, prior to the negotiations beginning, to ensure that there was public engagement, so we could hear from the public what they wanted in the contract, not after the fact, but prior to. And I'm really proud that much of what we heard from the community is in this contract. And so, consequently, you know, I heard Councilmember Cashman say, "We cannot let the perfect be the enemy of the good." And that has been my governing philosophy since the time I have been on this council. We have, we're here to make really difficult decisions, difficult decisions to try and move our city forward. Supporting this contract today moves our city forward, it allows us to begin the work on the next contract, so that we can include the reforms, the changes that people are wanting and desiring. We do have two consent decrees that will help us as a city to include some of those reforms, to achieve some of those reforms, to transform the Minneapolis Police Department. So, I wanted to state that, and I will be an affirmative vote on this contract today. Thank you, Mr. President.
I put myself last in queue, because I actually wanted to thank you for your leadership last term. One of the things that got me to a yes was that opportunity to really clearly articulate what I wanted to see in the contract, and I said, "If I don't see these things in this contract, I'm a no." And when the tentative agreement came out, I was anticipating being a no, because I didn't think that my demands would be represented in that contract. And I was actually shocked to see that the 70-30 ratio, along with the ability to have more flexibility around shift bidding, was actually included. And that's what has kind of put me in this challenging position, because they're included on a temporary basis within a letter of agreement, they're not in the core text of the contract. And so, I'm left weighing these two options of, do I want to see it in the core text and vote no, or do I accept that they're in there and vote yes? And one of the things that gets me to a yes is that we're talking about temporary versus permanent changes. There's no such thing as a permanent change. All there is is permanent pressure. And so, we have to keep the pressure on, and as I sit here weighing this final vote, I had to think through, what are the practical realities of voting this contract down, which I was, I want to be clear, very willing to do. And the practical reality would be going back to the negotiation table with very clear demands. And I think, you know, there could have been a chance that we voted this contract down, and said, "We need to make those temporary letters of agreement permanent, we're okay with the pay." I don't know if the membership of the Federation would accept that, I don't know if the broader constituency of our city would accept that, maybe they would just see it again as this overly reduced pro or anti-cop decision. I think, we're at a very technical point in this process, where we're getting into zipper clauses, and letters of agreement, and all kinds of new jargon that most non-lawyers are just not particularly familiar with. And even when I talk to labor experts, and I talk about a zipper clause, they say, "I don't know if I've ever heard of such a thing." So, we're charting new territory here, but what we need to do is keep the pressure on, because the reality is, and I think a number of members have said this, there's been a 180 shift in how this administration talks about the role of the union as it relates to reform. The reality is that management has always had the authority to reform this department. They either just chose not to do it, or just were not able to do it, because they just were not dedicated to seeing that kind of change. And so, we need to hold this administration accountable, we do need to create that roadmap of what that looks like, and accountability needs consequences. So, we need to be really clear about what are the consequences when we are not seeing the progress that we are demanding. And so, with that, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
No.
Vice President Chugtai.
No.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are eight ayes and four nays.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. Next, we will move to the Budget Committee, so that we can have a conversation on how we're going to pay for it, and that report will be presented by the committee's chair, Vice President Chugtai.